Good evening. Welcome to the study session for the Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, November 16th. Can we get a call this meeting to order? And can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner McCacken?
Yep.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler? Do not see-
She's absent.
She is absent. Chair Pro Tem Camp?
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove?
Here.
Chairman McCann?
Here. Thank you. Our first and only item of business is to review the city's traffic calming policy and speed policies. I assume we have a staff report on that. Presentation-
Our study session tonight will be presented by Zach Ponton, Assistant City Engineer, and Ryan Kim. What is-
Senior Traffic Engineer.
Senior Traffic Engineer.
So, good evening, Planning Commissioners. Chair McCann, I'm Zach Ponton, your Assistant City Engineer. Tonight, we're going to do a study session regarding our traffic calming policy and our speed cushion policy. Last time this was done for Planning Commission appears to have been back in 2015. Obviously, not all you guys were on that, and so we do have a couple agendas coming towards the Planning Commission and the next couple agendas. So, we thought it would be a good opportunity to at least show you what our policy is about, kind of open it up to you guys, so at any time tonight, if you have questions, don't be afraid to stop me. I'm here to kind of help you guys learn as much as you can of the policy. There's a lot of information. We included in your packet. The traffic calming policy, I believe, is what, 47, 48 pages? I'm going to try to simplify it for you. You have a copy to take home and, you know, study at your desires, right? So, you know, with that, we, like I said, stop me if I, if you have any questions. This is a learning, you know, opportunity for yourself and, or if there's things that you see or have ideas about potential changes. That is something that we're also potentially up for is updating this policy if we have to. Right now, the speed cushion policy is separate from the traffic calming policy. It seems like it should probably be combined into one bigger policy if we ever do an update. So, we're not expecting any recommendations. We'll just kind of take notes of anything you guys say and for future consideration and try to answer your questions if you have any. So, with that, I have a little slideshow. I gave you guys a copy, just in case you want to look at it at your own time or go at a different pace. So, bear with me here. All right, and so with me tonight, I do have Ryan Kim, our Senior Traffic Engineer, who's relatively new to the city, but comes to us with a lot of experience, which is very beneficial for us. If, even after tonight, you guys have any questions, don't be afraid to contact staff. Let us know about things that you may have questions on in the future. So, with that, we will start our little session here. Some of the things we'll be doing tonight is going over our traffic calming policy and the process. After that, I'll kind of go through some of those tools that we have in our toolbox, it's called. And so, most of that manual that you see of 48 pages is really the toolbox, is what they call it. And so, we'll, I'll briefly go through that. I'm not going to go through all 48 pages of the different things that things do, but I'll go over the main ones that San Clemente has done for residential streets and the main ones that you'll be seeing on future projects. After that, I got some, a couple examples of city projects that we've done for traffic calming, some slides to show you on that. And like I said, at any time, if you have any questions, just let me know and we'll go from there. I meant for this to be kind of an open forum and freestyle if it helps, you know, just educate you guys as much as possible. So, some of the things traffic calming is not, it's not closing down streets, it's not partial closures, it's not eliminating turn pockets and turn at intersections, it's not creating one-way streets. Those are all things that are done off traffic studies and traffic demands and only done when needed, not for calming purposes. Some, some of the things that staff often hears, and maybe you will from citizens too, is just putting in stop signs. That'll slow people down or a traffic signal or a crosswalk. Those are all things that technically in the industry, we don't like to be seen as traffic calming devices. They're simply, those are, stop signs are warranted, you know, when there's enough cross traffic that prohibits people from trying to safely get out of an intersection, not to slow people down just, and because people think there might be speeding in a neighborhood. And so, that's something that's very common and people will come in and request, you know, a stop sign just because. And so, one of the things we often do is we do a trap, a stop sign warrant to see if the traffic will warrant a stop sign. In most cases, if it's not one already there, it usually doesn't warrant one. Can you please explain what you mean by warrant? I'll let Ryan fix it if I, if I, if I mess this up, but we're doing a study and there's industry standards and when something might trigger, you have to have a certain amount of daily vehicle trips at each, each direction. And so, I'll let him fix it if it's not, if I'm not saying this right, but you do that study and it has to meet those minimum criteria before engineers like ourselves will recommend them for approval. What we don't like to do is put something in that's not warranted or doesn't meet the study, because sometimes that'll put us at a liability risk. Crosswalks, for example, communities may have put them in a lot in the older days just because now if they're not, if they're put in when they're unwarranted, I was taught the term, it leads to a false sense of security. And so, people get into a crosswalk, especially nowadays, first thing they're doing is looking at their phone and they're think they have the right of way instead of looking for that car or that speeding e-bike or something else. And so, that false sense of security is not something you want to create on something that wasn't warranted. And so, you'll often get that request though, or staff does quite often of these, these three main things of crosswalks, stop signs and traffic signals. And so, we hear that a lot and so, it is not a form of traffic calming. It's what we're trying to kind of get at. We do look at those as studies and if those warrant, if those, you know, those are usually brought to us by council. But if we also see an issue ourselves, we can also take that upon ourselves to initiate a study of one. So, with that, I'll kind of move on and this policy you have in front of us is, was adopted back in 2005. You know, there's some potential needs for updates with something that old. It's always good to keep things up to date. Traffic calming hasn't really seen a revolution of new ideas, though. The list of things in the toolbox is, you know, still relatively the same, especially for what we're going to propose on most of our local streets. The current process, I kind of handed you that bigger 11 by 17. That goes over, you know, that, you know, this thing's obviously prepared by an engineer. This flow chart is, could be at a nuclear, nuclear plant. It goes through the process, but in general, what you're seeing is, you know, a group of citizens will form a petition or they'll contact staff. And we say, if you're serious about this, please join with your neighbors. And that person who initiates that contact is usually the block leader. And so, that block leader will go around and get petitions from the people on their block. And when they get those petitions together, they'll turn them into staff and we will analyze that street. We go out, we put in the, the speed surveys, the traffic counts, and so a sheet later on, I'll, the next sheet is actually the evaluation study sheet and we'll go into what those numbers are that we're looking for. But we'll go out and we'll look at those numbers. Once we, the first step we do, and this kind of popped up on the Caifaro project that we brought to you a couple of weeks ago, we do that study to see if it even warrants any kind of traffic calming measures. And so, if they don't hit that score of 51 points, then technically, they're not meeting that trigger of needing traffic calming devices. And so, at that point, we'll usually notify the applicant, hey, we've done the study. Your numbers weren't high enough, not enough people were speeding, or your street is, you know, has different characteristics that didn't warrant that, that analysis.
Now, Mayor James, James brought up yesterday or two days ago when they did it, but a lot of times when you have those traffic study things out there, people slow down just because of that.
So, the radar truck that you're seeing-
Yeah.
And it's an interesting point and I'll kind of defer to Ryan if there's, when I heard that last night, I kind of made a note to myself too of what other devices do we have? And if there are other tools in the industry that we need to, you know, obtain, maybe that is, especially when council directs it, you know, that's something that we can look at obtaining.
Yes, we have two different kinds of speed counts. One is like a trailer. Yesterday, the mayor mentioned it. Yeah, it might affect the driver's speed, but we have another tool, which is radar speed kits with hidden or mounted on the streetlights, though no regular people will notice. So, we'll get the typical type, typical speeds through that machine.
Which one are we using?
We use both, but mainly we use the radar one. Sometimes we need to request the PD or the sheriff to install some locations to get it, but most of them, we use the radar ones.
And something I'll add with that too is that truck with the radar sign on there too, that big flashing, you know, pull behind sign is something we'll often put out there too, just because of complaints. And so, we're kind of constantly moving that truck around, not always because it's a survey, but just because we're letting those drivers know that it's something that, hey, you're, you're speeding, you're in an area that, you know, usually means the police are going to start showing up, you know, within the next few weeks after that if, if we're seeing a lot of high numbers. And so, certain communities, what, you know, I'll get on this the next slide, but one of the next, first things we do is call the police and say, can you increase your presence in the area? We're getting a lot of complaints. And then, if our radar data starts showing huge numbers, we can show that to our OCSD and show them that we're getting some really high numbers, if that's the case, or in quantity or in speed. And so, yeah, to answer your question, we do have multiple options of something a little bit more stealth and that's what's usually being used for the formal surveys.
Zach?
Yeah.
Is it a formal application that has to be submitted? Is there like a fee? The petitioners, do they have to be within a certain radius of allocation?
You know, there isn't anything formalized for this. And this, having come into this role, I've been with the city, I've grown up here, I've been here my whole life, having come into this role as a traffic manager now, that is something that kind of took me by a little bit of surprise too. There is no application, there is no fee, there's really, and there's a wide range of any, but there's not too many streets out there where somebody doesn't think they're speeding on their street, right? And so, it, it, we can get bombarded by a lot of applications. And so, that's where that petition comes in and says, if you're serious about this, you go put in some time, meet all your neighbors and get a petition signed. What I'm finding though, it is, is very easy to get those petitions signed because who's not, somebody shows up on your door, very few people are not going to sign that on such an emotional subject. And Caifaro was a great example of that. I think they obtained 90 something percent of their neighborhood. She was very persistent and got those signatures. And there's no application fee or anything, so staff's just kind of, we put them in a queue and we get to them when we can. We have our other work that we're working on too. And so, some of these are a little frustrating to the community because they turned in their petition and they want action that day or that next week or that next meeting. And it's tough because we can get a lot of them. I think right now, we have four or five formal applications in, about 10 of just people that clearly aren't going to qualify. Their street is just way too steep. We've done the preliminary numbers. We've told them, hey, you're just, we're not getting the speeding, we're not getting the numbers, you're not going to qualify. And most of those times, they'll go away. But when there is no fee and there is no application, there's not a, anything to stop the whole city from coming in every street. And so, it is an interesting eye-opener for me as the, the new manager of it to, to kind of see that. And with Caifaro is a great example, is they didn't even meet the criteria to have traffic calming measures. Our policy says, since she received more than 67% of the neighborhood, we had to have a hearing anyway. And so, I came in charge and said, well, did they ever get their hearing? Does she want one? She says, of course. So, we came here, but with recommendation for denial of anything. And reality is, it was a tough thing, you know, kind of on you guys to put you in that spot. And that's what, but that's what our policy says. And I'll sidetrack just a hair. You guys directed me to go meet with them. I have met with two of the HOA board members. We did come up with a pretty neat solution. We're due to the curve, due to this downhill, we're going to put some cautionary signs that say curve ahead, cautionary 15 miles an hour. It's not an enforceable speed limit for ticketing purposes, but at least somebody will see a sign that says 15 miles an hour. And it's a very cheap, somewhat easy solution that could potentially help that neighborhood out. Their other thing they brought up was can we get some electronic speed signs permanently on our lights? I said, well, the city's not going to recommend that because you didn't qualify, but we will give them a, you know, a free encroachment permit if they want to go and buy one as an HOA. And because the guy was saying he found one for super cheap. The one we buy is a lot more elaborate and much more expensive. So, if he wants to put a cheap one up, they can do that. We just won't maintain it and operate it. They'll be responsible for it. So, that's something that did help at Faro, but that's what our policy says, is these people have to, you know, they go through the, they get their day in court per se. So, that was an interesting thing to do though for denial, really. Regarding, regarding the speed surveys, are they ever taken by, manually by someone sitting there and recording the speeds as they come with a radar gun? Isn't that how 85th percentile studies are done?
Yes, we have a program and hardware, which I mentioned it. One is radar speed, radar speeding machines. We automatically get all datas from that and volumes and speed and get the 85th percent of speed too. So, we get the all results with-
That's all automatic?
Yes.
But I'm saying, is there ever anyone, because when you do speed surveys and get the 85th percentile normally to every five years to update speed limits, isn't that taken manually?
No.
Okay. That's where, I think we're going to end up actually doing that pretty soon for the speed limits around the city, like you were saying. I think those are, we're going to end up hiring a consultant to do that because it's such a wide array of the whole city to do speed surveys on every street. But those sounds like aren't done by hand, they're done by those remote cameras that are attached to poles. And so, that's more of a little bit more stealth of a thing also. And so, to kind of to finish up on the process, once we do get a petition, we do look at the math of the street. Does it qualify? Does it get the score? If they do, we meet with the neighborhood, we go over them with what our preliminary findings are. I recently met with a neighborhood and we had a good turnout of 40-plus people and we talk about what we're possibly going to do for that neighborhood. We tell them the next steps. Once we come to that development plan of what we're going to do, we'll schedule it from a Planning Commission hearing. And that's where you as a body is, I think our recommendation is just to move forward to city council or not. And so, something, usually we're going to come to you with recommendations for approval of something. Our policy does say bring forward those denials too. And so, your recommendation on Faro was to meet with the HOA and see if there's other options we can do. At first, I was thinking, oh, we've already studied it, there's not much we can do, but that did lead to, you know, an interesting meeting with the HOA president and vice president. And so, it did lead to something beneficial to that community, I think. If it is a project with recommendations for approval, you as a body would then move that forward to city council. Once it goes to city council, the public's notified again. If it's an HOA, we try to notify the entire HOA. And so, that next step at city council will also get into the budget of those improvements. I usually won't bring that up to your sake. You are just more of a design body of, you know, what's, what's the physical design that we're looking for? Yes?
So, yeah, in the process here, I have, as a frequent, as mentioning to Bart, I do watch all the council meetings and there's a trend. And I notice it on the agenda and I notice in public comments, residents will just come up and complain. And then, the council wanting to be responsive will direct staff to do something. And then, I see that weeks later pop back up on the agenda and there's a little report. We're not involved. We're bypassed. And it seems to me, we're almost doing a disservice and what we should do is follow this process. Anytime, regardless if the intake is through the form or through a council public comment, I think it would be wise if we, they accept that and then the staff response would be, we will put you through our process, we'll show you what it is, you can get your signatures and then put them through this whole thing. Then it gets to the council versus skipping all of that and just getting back to the council. That'd just be a thought, because I do see quite a few of those and runs.
And if you want to talk offline to, or here, it's fine. There was a, there was a situation where they came back and said, can staff report back on this certain application?
Yeah.
My report just came back and said, we're working on it, we'll get to you after we go to Planning Commission.
Okay, cool.
And so, that was my response and it wasn't exactly what I think council was aware of.
I think if they're educated that we have this process, I've been on here a year and didn't know a lot of this. I mean, I have met with you one-on-one and we've gone on a couple of field trips and you've been very helpful. And so, I've kind of learned through experience that you do all this stuff, but prior, really didn't even know and I'll bet some of the council members may not know as well.
And that's what, you know, the purpose of tonight is, then just help let you guys know that there is a process for this. If people are approaching you on the street or emails you're seeing, let them know, contact us and Jane or Ryan or myself will let them know the process. If it's not already on our website, I'll, I'll kind of look to see if it's on our website and make sure that's there too. And there is a process for it. Certain other aspects you brought up, if there is questions of, you know, certain areas, we don't always bring everything to Planning Commission. Last night was can a roundabout fit on Palazada? It wasn't a formal survey, it wasn't a full study we did, we just, we looked at it and went, it just doesn't have the configuration of all the streets, don't make that an option. It's a great idea for us to look at and we were able to look at it and just report back to council that that's a difficult thing to do. And so, once, you know, the Planning Commission makes that recommendation though, it does go to council for that final determination and council will be the one to kind of look at the budgets of these things. My last point on this page is, you know, from our CIP budget, we are given just $80,000 a year on traffic calming. That could be used really quickly on one street, one block, if you were to throw your whole toolbox at one street. And so, that's something to take into consideration when it's very easy, when the first- And so that's something to take into consideration when it's very easy, when the first person of the year shows up. Do you give them the whole, you know, allotment? Because that next person who shows up, you're saying, you're approved. Once it goes to council, I'm going to say, okay, we're out of money. They're going to either go next year or your general fund is going to pay for this. So that's that tough decision that council then is put on. So staff will usually try to, um, go through this in an economical sense of can we spread this around a little bit and try to, you know, make as much of the community happy as we can. So that kind of explains the process at least itself. You know, some of the things we look at when we are calculating this, I mentioned before. When we first get those petitions, we're seeing if they even qualify. Do they get, meet the score? I.e. do they, is it warranted for traffic calming devices to be put in? Uh, we measure their speed. We look at their, um, average daily traffic counts. Uh, it has to be a certain range really for us to, if you only got six cars on your street, we're not going to recommend anything. So you're going to get a zero in that column, right? And so there's, you know, there's a point scale on this table you have in front of you. We look at crashes. Uh, we look at the pedestrian generators. Are there sidewalks or are there pathways for people and safety issues on that street that we should take into consideration? And, uh, I think, was that Gary at the last meeting on Faro, you had mentioned, you know, there's a park nearby. What about the further park or the further? The tough thing with that is you can always kind of go further out on this. So there is no radius on some of these things for the beneficial things. That's kind of just our engineering judgment. And we try to be consistent across the community of just trying to be fair to everybody. So, uh, if somebody doesn't meet that fifty one points, we'll notify those applicants and say, hey, do you maybe want us to redo that study in the summer when there's more traffic? Or if you think something's so, uh, a good example, that was the hundred block of Barcelona. They technically didn't meet that criteria the first time around. And so you'll see a petition that's two years old sometimes and we'll say, hey, we're going to try again in the summer. Cause maybe, maybe this traffic's different. The patterns are different. And so for Barcelona, that did help them. And that was that last one that we formally approved, uh, through your body. If, if they do meet the points, we go through that and we start designing stuff that'll improve that area. So like I said, Kai Faro was that last one you saw, so I'm not picking on them, but I liked their, uh, analysis of it. They ended up with forty seven instead of fifty one on the point scale. Pretty close. But that's why we showed up with, hey, we're not recommending anything out here for them from a financial standpoint and a design standpoint. The, um, so if, yeah, we, we had that hearing because their petition had more than sixty seven percent of the neighborhood. And so that's that one thing in that policy that do we really want to do a hearing every time there's a denial? So that's something that kind of opened my eyes a lot was if we do that, then why even do the studies? Why even do stuff if there's just going to be a hearing every time? Let's just come up here and, and do this. But so there's a, there's a, you know, there's a benefit either way of, of doing the hearing or not. And I, Faro was a good example though. I think you guys' recommendation to have me see if I can work other things out. It did, you know, I kind of had my doubts at first because we had already analyzed it. But I think we ended up finding something with that HOA where I thought they were pretty happy the other day when I finished with them.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Um, I know you guys wanted me to come back with an update on that. I don't know if I still have to or not. But, um, I'll look to Adam if I formally need to do that.
Like, so is there in consideration of them putting up their own light type thing? Is there a quality issue that the city is concerned about? I mean, can we do this thing from Amazon or?
No, that's a great question actually. Um, and that's what I warned them about because he came back with, I think it's a three thousand dollar camera. And I said, well, ours is close to eight or nine, so there must be something wrong here, even though we pay prevailing wage on certain things. So I, my Jane, our traffic assistant engineer, um, looked immediately said, oh no, that's the, the cheap one out of the box type of thing. City will not probably look at the qua- quality of it. We'll issue an encroachment permit to allow it there for kind of a hold harmless. But we'll also have that right to remove it or have them remove it if it's broken down, if it's doing things, if it becomes unsightly. So that encroachment permit does give us control so that they don't put too many. If it comes a light issue to where planning even might want to have a certain control of certain areas.
Yeah. Chair McCann brought up last time about, you know, when we were talking about those dots you put in, the noise pollution. And then the lights, obviously light pollution, you know, it's something to consider where and whose window that's facing in and all that, you know?
And that's an excellent point too, because electronic speed signs are on, in our toolbox. And, uh, when we do a device like that or speed cushions, we actually one of the, part of that process, when we say get the neighborhood consent on there, we literally get written approval from the four houses that surround those devices. And so I'm asking for not just the renter, but the property owner's approval if, if possible. And because they're going to be the ones with a flashing light or a speed cushion that they have to back over every day. So we'll put them in the places that make most sense economically and scientifically, especially for the the lights kind of go on the nearest pole, but speed cushions, we'll put them where they, where the science is telling us where to put them. But then we go to those neighbors and say, hey, you're going to have one right here. Are you okay with it? If they're not, we'll, we'll shove it down the street a little bit and shift it down the street a bit. The, in the packet you guys got, you have the, um, I think it's forty seven, forty eight page traffic calming manual. There are a lot of things in there. Uh, the first few pages are very helpful. If you are reading it, look at the first few pages. It talks about the process that we just, you know, if I skipped over anything, it, it's pretty detailed in there. A lot of the things it talks about are bigger picture things that the city can, can, can consider. You know, I have here on their screen, a list of a lot of different things. Roundabouts, road diets, road diet, you're taking a four lane down to two lanes type of thing. That's a big step. Those are usually very regional type, not something that's coming from a citizen. And not something financially that the city's going to do on a small residential street unless it's council driven. So a lot of those measures in that, in that guidebook that you got now, um, are stuff that we just, they're more big picture San Clemente. South El Camino Real, we are looking at a road diet. We're looking at taking four lanes down to two in the Tressel neighborhood down there from Magdalena all the way to the city line. The traffic doesn't require the four lanes. Um, we have an opportunity for a bicycle improvement grant. And we'll stripe it for two with a nice wider parking zone and that should calm the traffic down there too. So those types of applications are a lot of what you're seeing in this, the reference manual you get. So I'll kind of go through this pretty quick, but a lot of those aren't stuff you're going to see on an average residential request that we're going to get. So this is kind of that continued list of a lot of things you're seeing on there. The ones that we do, and I'll go over next, are in this toolbox. Um, and they're the, you know, we, we start with the easy pickings and then we go into the more and more expensive things is, is what I'll get into. Examples of what we typically do and, um, we'll get these from petitions and it's kind of how it started with the city is we'd get a petition. We'd go in our toolbox and what can we do? You can remove center lines in certain streets where it's not too curvy and not too hilly. We can remove those center lines and start adding, adding what's called edge striping. Not all people believe us on this, but the science shows that that technically slows people down or it should over time. You have some conflict and friction when cars are passing each other where they're not sure where that center is. It forces everybody to start slowing down. And so that's one of the ones that we, we started as, when it was only when people were complaining of speeding. This last asphalt repair project that we just did and we're asphalting eighty four streets right now. We went ahead and just council gave direction, I found council gave direction to staff in nine, two thousand and twelve. Go ahead and start doing some of these toolboxes without taking it to planning commission and city council every time. So we have eighty four streets. I think we added edge lines on forty of them that didn't have it. So we're gonna, so instead of going through the process forty times or the huge list to you guys. Council in two thousand and twelve, I found, gave staff that ability to just, hey, if you can just start adding edge lines and removing center lines, just go for it. And so that was something that the policy may not address that though. It probably says we do, we go through a different thing. So if we update the policy, I'll probably include that staff does have the ability to add edge lines where the city engineer feels it's applicable. So that's one of the most first things we do on a lot of streets. And now we're doing it more proactively instead of just when complaints are coming in. And so, um, another neat project the city did, this is one of those bigger picture projects down in the north beach. We did, uh, some curb extensions like bulb outs. And so this is that interchange of Boca de Playa and Avenida Pico. Ellie's Table, I believe that is. This drastically slows people down around that corner. It's, it, it's got yield signs. It's got crosswalks. We've now shifted the parking to back end. So this is something that, you know, was council directed, I think. I wasn't part of this, but it's a bigger type project. And one of the things I noticed going through the traffic manual myself, there's a table in there about average cost for things. I'm going to say that's not a very accurate table on a lot of these things. The bulb out was not fifteen thousand dollars. It was closer to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars project. And so when you start getting a neighborhood request of let's do narrowing the streets and bulb outs. Can keep that in mind that those costs on that table you're seeing are not today's numbers, that's for sure. And probably not very realistic and, and, you know, today's numbers, I'll kind of leave it at that. Some of the bigger streets you see, this is, uh, Camino del Rio. I believe it was four lanes when it was very first constructed. And this was shifting it down to one lane and adding a single lane roundabout. And diameter on this is about a hundred feet curb to curb of what you need. And so you're not going to see that on most streets. We're not going to see this as an option unless that ride of way is very large. And so it wouldn't have worked with a two lane roundabout for two lanes. And so it's a bottleneck that gets it down to one lane, roundabout slows people down, controls that stop, gets rid, gets rid of that cross street stop sign. And so one of the few big scale roundabouts you'll see in the city. And being a new road, it was a little bit easier to implement. And so very hard to squeeze in though on, on normal residential streets that are existing. And if you watched council last night, that was that topic that, uh, one of the council members asked staff to look at was roundabout on Palazada. It just, we may have been able to get the width of a diameter, but it was the distance in between all the streets were too short. You have to have a certain stacking of vehicles in between intersections to get to a roundabout. And so it was a great idea to look into. It's just a matter of it didn't, the, the physics of it didn't work in terms of those intersections are all about two hundred feet apart. You can't really squeeze in a roundabout that area. And so, um, uh, speed cushions, um, this is something that's become a, a hot item lately. Uh, ever since this policy was created, prior to two thousand and twelve, the city didn't have, I believe, any speed cushions on public streets. Some that were in were put in by developers originally in the sixties and before the science required us to look at numbers on a lot of these things. And so you'll see them in other nearby communities because they've been there decades and prior to the engineering analysis of triggering things like speed cushions. So one thing I will say, um, you know, these are examples of what we've done in the past. I'm, I'm noticing as I take over this kind of role is some of those areas were receiving speed cushions. Prior to implementing some of those other things that they should have been implementing first. And so they kind of went straight to whatever the public wanted. And so that's not what our policy says though. Our policy, I believe I have it on a slide here. Uh, the highlighted section on this policy is, um, speed humps will be considered after following the process of defined in the traffic calming policy. And after implementing other non-intrusive tools for controlling speeds. And so most of the speed humps that you see in these communities probably didn't go through that whole toolbox before they got to that more intrusive type of device. And so, and then now it's kind of snowballing on us a little bit because now one street has it, the next street wants it, the next street wants it, the next street wants it. And so you, physically it's a, a physical barrier. And so what this sentence is telling me is we should be looking at some of those things that aren't as, um, intrusive. And so I'll probably be proposing a lot of electronic speed signs in the upcoming applications because that is something that's less intrusive. And I have looked at other cities' policies just to see how out of date ours is, if it's, needs any updating. Some of the cities, it's, it's very outlined. You will start with this, then you will do this, and then you'll do speed bumps are literally the last, last, you know, item type of thing. So that is something that, um, we will be bringing forward to you on some of these next couple of applications. Like I mentioned before, the speed hump policy is actually a separate document. We included it in your packet. I think it's in the first few pages. It's just a four page document that talks about, uh, some of the criteria for, for speed dumps. Ryan and Jane love to correct me. It's, I think there's, there's, I think, or you have a slide on this. Maybe I should save that. Well, actually it's on this slide. Nevermind. So, uh, they like to tell me we should, I should be referring to the speed cushions. Speed cushions are more of that rubberized device that you put down, um, as you see on this screen. And speed humps, um, speed tables, there's other different devices out there. Right now the city's got a pre-approval from OCFA to, that they like the speed cushions. Their trucks fit over those spacing in the gaps. So that's why the city has moved forward with speed cushions on most every application and not gone forward with some of these others. If we do go with any other designs, we're going to be looking at emergency service response times and having to get those analyzed every time. And so it's easier for the past, it looks like staff just simply picked the speed cushions that OCFA was okay with, and that's how we've ended up with a lot of streets with speed cushions. Not sure how I'm doing on time, but, uh, that was the end of my presentation. But opening up to any questions if you have any or?
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Is there a time limit on those, um, speed? What do you call them? Speed notifiers? The ones that flash the speed limit? Because I see those all around the county and some of them, I mean, it seems like they've been there for years and others they're there for some period of time and then they're removed.
You mean in terms of how long they last or how long?
How long you leave them there?
Some of them are going to be permanent. Recently we, last year, one of my first things I did for traffic was adding, you guys actually, it was your recommendation on, on Padreza. When we added the bike lanes, due to the number of complaints we've received in the community, we started looking at other options of what we should do. And we're not going to add speed cushions on a forty five mile an hour road. So that next option in our toolbox was, um, curve ahead, you know, caution signs or the electronic speed signs. And those are planned to be permanent for us. It's a, a little heavier duty solar version. It costs about eight, nine thousand dollars each is my understanding. Um, but I haven't heard any complaints on them yet though.
It seems like after a while, um, you know, people would start to ignore those if they're there for years.
I mean, that's an interesting point. Yeah. Does it wear off with time? I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm hoping that the people that see them, there are people that live there that aren't, you know, wreck, you know, daily speeders type of thing. And it's there to notify those newer people to the community. At least that's what my, my thought process is. That are coming in and not as familiar with the area just to, hey, slow down your, your speeding and. You know, I, I drive Camino Capistrano very often and they have them up there on that twenty five mile an hour zone on Camino Capistrano. Up in, I guess that's Dana Point, but, uh, they have some up there and it definitely still forces me to slow down. Because I, I picture that being a police officer looking at that as he's giving you, ready to give you a ticket, you know?
Anybody else have questions?
I got a couple of things. So Commissioner Camp, I think, brought up, uh, a fee is, is there a fee or is there not a fee? There's not a fee, but should we consider one? This is to kind of everybody, to you Adam. Should there be a fee to, and how, okay, let's back up. How many of these petitions do we get annually?
We get a lot of requests and we're going to analyze each kind of request that comes in to see if it's something that could be, could there be improvements that could be done?
Once a week, like fifty a year?
I would probably guess at least in terms of just contacts to staff, at least fifty. How many turn into formal petitions? You know, maybe ten, you know? Because not a lot of people, once we tell them, a lot of people we can tell. Because not a lot of people, once we tell them, a lot of people we can tell right away, hey, your street's too steep, it's got too, it's too turned, and you're just not gonna get the speed bumps. No, a lot of people go away, though.
So, once it hits the formal petition, what's the city's cost to do the analysis on average?
You know, I'd have to look at that, that's a great question, though. We do spend quite a bit of time, once these are going in. And it could be in the dozens of hours and you're looking at, you know, $40 to $60 an hour staff members.
And the amount of signatures, is it 10? Do I remember that right?
You know, you kind of got me on that one.
I think it's 10.
Someone says 10 in here.
Doesn't it say 10 in there?
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty easy to do, right?
It's so easy. Adam, do you think that there's an opportunity to, do you think it's a good idea, or what do you commissioners think, to impose a fee for the application?
I personally don't think it's a good idea because it's public safety and you don't want to put an economic hurdle in front of that. Also think that you could increase the number of signatures, but, you know, frankly, this is tricky because it's a perception and there's reality. Sometimes they're the same, sometimes the perception and reality are not the same, but you have to do something because it's a problem for the people who live there every day. So, I think part of it is just, it's communication, it's education, it's letting the council know that this isn't, you know, this is gonna require funding. But I don't, you know, maybe, you know, educating HOAs, you know, on this kind of stuff and letting them, you know, be the first line of education. But I think the process should not have a fee and I think it should be accessible, you know? And, but maybe there is a educational PowerPoint or some kind of a PDF file that when people contact you, boom, they get that. And it kind of lays out, like, if these are the things that you're thinking, these are the things that we'd have to do. These are maybe some smaller or quicker or less intrusive types of solutions that we might, you know, might be able to do quicker or sooner. And just to give that information to people, because I don't think they, the community really understands this, any of the, you know, best practices, they don't understand a lot of traffic engineering concepts. And so, for, education could be helpful and right off the bat, so that residents feel they're heard. Because that's the number one thing, I think, that we will want to do, is make sure people are heard. Same with council. So, that's a, that should be maybe a new toolkit item. Could be something like a public-facing document.
And that's a good idea. I think as we, as Ryan's getting into his role and we're kind of catching up on a lot of stuff that has kind of backlogged a little bit, one of the things I had an idea was is to relook at our website, look at those packets of, is there a way to, you know, we still want to be that, you know, Jane answers a lot of calls, Ryan answers a lot of calls, Jane's very responsive to people. And I don't, so I don't want to just, hey, see the website, goodbye. But, so we're always answering the calls, but at the same time, it's a lot, you know, when you get, it's a very emotional subject for people. And it's tough. And you get, I get on the phone because I'll say if they're really mad, let them, you know, let them vent to me. And it could be a long call because it's not something you're hanging up on, you know? You're talking to people for quite a long time and, you know, it's a very emotional subject for people, though. And it's tough. I'm on a tiny cul-de-sac in town, I think people are speeding, they're probably not because it's such a short cul-de-sac, but it really feels like they are. They're technically going too fast for the situation, but are they going 25? And so that's always a tough one.
Great points, and I appreciate your points, Cameron. Those are good.
I have a couple questions, Zach. In the traffic, kind of more general, in the traffic engineering profession and practice, there's standards for just about everything, right? I mean, when you place stop signs, what conditions have to exist, or crosswalks, like you mentioned, things like that. There's very defined standards that you guys can analyze and say, does it meet these criteria or not? Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. And for the most part, my understanding is, is that if, where cities get in trouble is liability-wise, is if they don't follow the standards. Is that accurate?
It's pretty accurate and if, you know, I'll be pretty upfront with you guys, if we're not recommending a speed cushion and you guys want to put one on a steep street, I'm gonna probably stand up and say, I really believe you guys need to reconsider this. Because it starts turning into a liability issue because you don't put speed cushions above a certain percentage of steep street. You don't put them on a bend. And so, if staff's kind of recommending something, take it with a grain of salt, most of the time we're trying to protect the city.
Just real quick, like, that's where we have the electronic speed signs, because where I live, it's maybe 7% grade and it's a curve.
Correct.
You can go 60 just coasting. So, we put that sign up there, I'm telling you, I don't see speeders hardly at all. And people do observe that. And it's up there and it's a really effective on downhill, where you can't put any kind of other measures in.
And that was Pedriza, right? Because if that's the case, those bike lanes probably really helped too.
And that too.
Because it felt like such a wide lane.
Yeah.
When you were driving that, I used to take my kid to learn to drive out there. And it was, felt like such a wide lane. Once the bike lanes went in and it narrowed it down to 10 or 11 feet, it really slows you down just mentally because you're, you're in a lane now, not a wide highway.
Are there frequently unintended consequences when you guys go to implement a proposed solution? You know, for example, like, we talked about the dots, right? Oh, hey, let's put down dots, but then all of a sudden that creates noise issues, things like that.
You know, I'm not aware of a lot. The dots were an interesting one. They were put in in the frontera, the coast area, under a different application as a traffic calming measure. And it did come back and get requested to be removed due to an issue like that. That's the only one I can kind of think of. I haven't really heard of, maybe Jane's the one that hears a lot of the calls, though. I can ask her that and report back to you, though.
Well, I guess it's not just that. What I'm thinking is like, for example, unwarranted stop signs, right? My understanding is, okay, people want to put in a stop sign to slow people down, but then if the drivers, if they're always stopping at a sign and there's never any cross-traffic, they're more likely to just blow off or blow through the stop sign because it's not supposed to be there.
Right. And that's where you'll see that in some of these older situations where stop signs were just put in, quote, just because, maybe, because there was pressure to do so, or the developer just wanted it when he developed the track. And if, I think it's a great point you bring up, because if people are, there's nobody ever there, people start running that sign. And last night was a great example at San Congonial Park, where if people are running that sign, it's usually because there's not a lot of other people traveling that street for through traffic other than going to the park. And so people are just so used to that that it sounds like they're, you know, just starting to run the sign.
Okay. Do you find complaints are usually, are more driven by, you're gonna have your few really high-speeders, right? Let's, I'll stereotype, teenagers or whatever, right? A few really high-speeders or more where there's just like a high median speed? Or is it both?
Complaint-wise, I think you just, yeah, it's that overall traffic. I think people are just, don't like the traffic on their streets. And now with the, you get a lot of louder cars, we're getting a lot of complaints on loud cars.
Yeah.
Sounds like they're going fast, but they could be going really slow and loud. And so I think it's a wide spectrum.
Okay. For my two cents, I would recommend that you guys consider updating the construction cost estimates in this manual. Because if you say that they're nowhere close to realistic, then that just gives everybody an unrealistic, it gives the public an unrealistic thing of what they're asking for, it gives council, oh, well, we can give them one of those, and then it turns out it's eight times that or whatever. That would be my two cents.
That was my thought, too, when I saw that, for sure.
I gave my input on the manual, or quick public-facing document, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and we'll get into our website and just see if there's a nice packet for it. I think that was a great example. It's something I was planning on doing because we've, we've done a couple different things like that for other aspects of difficult to deal with things in the city and create a little flow chart for them. I won't go as elaborate as this flow chart, but I'll try to keep it simple for the people.
Okay. Any other questions or things to be discussed?
Commissioners, just one item for your consideration. It is about to be 5:55 PM. We have a regular study session, excuse me, regular meeting of the planning commission scheduled to start at 6:00 PM. If you'd like to take a break, that's not, that's okay, but it would be nice to decide now whether you'd like to start that meeting at 6:00 and take a five-minute break beforehand or extend the study session if you'd like to, if you have additional questions or items of discussion. And then we could start the regular meeting of the planning commission a couple minutes later.
I appreciate that. I mean, I haven't heard anybody chime up as saying they have anything else they need to discuss.
Right now.
Okay. So, with that, I'll adjourn the, this study session to the next regular study session to be held Wednesday, December 7, 2022 at 5:00 PM in City Hall Council Chambers. And...
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're good.
Welcome to the Planning Commission of, uh, Wednesday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, for the city of Saint Clemente. I call this meeting to order, and, um, Commissioner Camp, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner McCacken?
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler is not in attendance. Chair Pro Tem Camp?
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove?
Here.
And Chairman McCann?
Here.
Thank you. Um, we have no special orders of business. Um, we do have item number five, the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of November second. Um, I'd like to note that there is a revised version, very slightly revised, there was a date corrected in that, so we're gonna be considering the revised version with the corrected date.
That is correct, sir. And the revised date has to do with the, uh, date identified for the adjournment of the previous meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the revised minutes.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. I don't see anyone here to speak on any items not on the agenda. Is that correct? Great. We have nothing on the consent calendar. Moving on to item eight A, public hearings. Discretionary sign permit, DSP twenty-two dash one fifty-one, Reyes Paradise Residential Care Facility Monument Sign.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Laura Corey. I'm an Assistant Planner with the Planning Division. I'm presenting item A, Reyes Paradise Monument Sign. The project's located at one-on-one Avenida Calafia in the Community Commercial Three Zone, and also in the coastal zone. It is going to be, um, a monument sign for Reyes Paradise Care Facility for Dimension Alzheimer's. It was approved in July fifth, two thousand and sixteen, and is in, in full construction now. It's a two-story building. And the proposed site location for the monument sign is at the corner of Calafia and Avenida del Presidente. Also, um, the sign is going to be located near a city gateway that's located off of the I five and the Calafia off-ramp. The applicant, Laura Riley with Starfish Signs, is requesting approval of a sixty-two-point-seven square foot monument sign. It has, uh, halo illumination in the middle, uh, channel letters for the logo, and non-illuminated letters at the bottom. The monument sign reflects the Spanish Colonial Revival design of the primary building. The materials proposed are, um, Spanish Colonial Revival architecture. There's blue glazed tile surround, polished bronze logo, and halo-lit channel letters. There's non-illuminated flat letters at the bottom. Uh, we met with the Design Review Subcommittee on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The sign location was reviewed by the Design Review Committee and found that the, given the scale of the monument and the size of the letters, the sign was freeway-visible and not freeway-oriented in accordance with the sign ordinance. The sign's size, um, does not create a negative visual impact to the designated gateway entrance. We determined that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of CEQA, and we request the approval of the project subject to the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody have any questions for Laura at this time?
I have a question.
Okay, uh, great.
Um, at the meeting, the R C meeting, um, we, at least I requested, uh, possibly another look or some modifications to the sign. Uh, it doesn't look like those were made, is, is that true?
No, sir, the, the property owner chose to go with the current design.
Good, thank you.
Would the, any other questions? I, I'm wondering, before we have questions, if we should offer the applicant to, if they wanna make a presentation. What do you think, Adam, would be the best sequence?
Be also good if you presented the color board and explained where and so forth that the colors are used.
Yeah, because maybe the combination of them and the applicant, if they wanna make a presentation, will answer some of our questions.
That's what I think.
Yes, and, uh, typically, we would have a staff presentation, a, um, a staff presentation followed by, uh, an applicant presentation if they, if they wish. The public hearing typically would be opened up after that. Uh, I, I do think the applicants would be in the best position to describe the materials and the, um, uh, the, uh, design of the sign itself, but, uh, staff, staff could do that if, if that was the commission's request.
Okay, quick question also, uh, 'cause I see...
Hi.
This wonderful woman over there, not near a microphone.
Laura Riley, um, she is joined by Mike Riley. They are, uh, the owners of Starfish Sign Company, the, um, representatives of the property owners here today, and, uh, and they can present this. If you would like, I'm more than happy to bring the board over to the podium so that she can speak into the microphone.
Yeah, I'm thinking we need her in the microphone.
The recording.
Yeah, it's fine. I'll just step over. I'll move it over here. Hi, I'm Laura Riley. I'm the owner of Starfish Sign and Graphics, and we've been working on this project for about a year. There's been a lot of design and redesign, but, um, I can go over this. This is, um, going to be block and, block and then, um, with stucco on the back of it. So you can see the stucco's here. Um, the front is gonna have the glazed blue right here. These decorative panels are going down the sides, on both sides. Okay, these, this is the non, this color here, C, is the non-illuminated residential care communities, that's non-illuminated. And then, uh, the G is, this is going to be a bronze illuminated logo, halo illuminated with the, um, Reyes Paradise being also illuminated. And then this is white behind it.
So is the, in the image, the, the, the basic background color is like a dark navy.
It's...
Is that a navy, or is it the, the tile F?
It's this color. This color. This is what the, our customers supplied us with. They told us navy, that's the color.
Okay. Is that the extent of the, your presentation?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Unless you have any questions.
And that's fine, I'm not saying that, I just wanted to make sure we're not cutting you off.
No.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Mr. Cosgrove, then Davis?
Can you remind me how the logo is illuminated?
It's halo illuminated, so what these, the, both the halo, the logo and the, um, letters are pin-mounted, so they're, um...
No, I, I, when you did your presentation, you, you said only the letters were halo-illuminated, and then you just said the logo was illuminated.
Oh, they're both...
And it threw me off, 'cause I thought, I thought they were both halo.
They are.
Perfect, thanks.
Just looking for some education, right? So what is the sign ordinance? It's twenty-four square foot or twenty-five square foot?
If you wanna go beyond that, that's what triggers the discretionary.
Sure. But tell me what the, why we have that sign ordinance at twenty-five? I mean, what, you know, like, like, does anybody that comes applies for a deviance in the sign ordinance get it type thing?
So administrative is anything twenty-five below, and then above that would be discretionary sign permit?
Mm-hmm.
And the, that cutoff of twenty-five square feet is consistent throughout multiple sign types and in different areas of the city.
Hmm.
For whatever, for whatever reason, uh, that was identified as, as, uh, the cutoff between, um, ministerial approval, meaning more over-the-counter for, by staff, versus something that would require discretionary review.
It's a beautiful building. It's gorgeous, super classy, I dig it. I went by it today. I think, is there lighting hours? You know, I mean, does this thing turn off at like ten o'clock? You know, there's some residents, I was just wondering, is there city ordinance about lighting and when a commercial building's lights turn off on signs or anything like that?
Uh, the only regulations that we have that, um, require lights to be off on signs would relate to massage establishments.
Oh.
Um, there are, that's not to say that there, there could not be signs conditioned to turn their lights off. Because this, because of the type of use that is on site, being a residential care facility, um, I would anticipate that there's probably a higher likelihood that emergency services are going to need to find this place overnight while it's dark. Um, so I, that would be a consideration, uh...
Could I just jump into, I know where you're going, and we've had discussions about that, but when it's halo, the light spill is minimal.
Yeah, yeah, I respect that.
And the glare is almost zero.
Yeah.
So I, that's why I think it's a kind of a...
My, I think my...
Notwithstanding the emergency response needing to see it.
Absolutely. Good points, thank you. Um, one of my, my concerns is the overall height. I think coastal doesn't engage if it's under a certain height, is that true? I, I thought I saw something about coastal. It's in the coastal zone, and because it's under sixty inches, it doesn't have to be conditioned on coastal approval, is that correct or no?
Coastal has the ability, uh, to review, uh, currently, they have the ability to review, uh, any projects that are within the, uh, the city's, um, coastal zone, with the exception of a few specified types of development that are in, are what we have, what we call the categorical exclusion order. If they're outside of that, which sign, which signage is not, um, or, excuse me, if signage is outside of the categorical exclusion order, then, uh, there's a, an application to the coastal commission would, would, would be required, which is a coastal development permit. However, not all projects go through the entire C D P process. Uh, some of them could be eligible for, uh, either a letter of exemption or a waiver, and those are, um, one and potentially three-month processes respectively, um, where they would look at something and say, well, it's not categorically exempt, uh, from, uh, from review, but it's not something that we're terribly concerned with, and so at a staff level, they may provide like a letter of exemption.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the, the city isn't being exposed because of the size and the height and everything, and particularly because I thought I saw it referenced in here when I was reading through, it wasn't exposed, the city wasn't exposed because the height limit was, was so low of sixty inches, so, but what I wanna bring up behind the sign, did you all catch that there's a retaining wall? And the reason there's a retaining wall is because this sign is above grade to the actual property, probably, I, I'm guessing eighteen, twelve to eighteen inches?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the sign, if you, if you say the sign is sixty inches, if you go above grade, you'd have to add that twelve-inch differential there, and what that retaining wall is basically holding back. That's kinda what I wanna bring up and make sure that doesn't expose us to some height restrictions that we need to be concerned about there.
No, the coastal commission does have authority and jurisdiction to review this matter. It, they'll, they will have that opportunity. Um, uh, and so if there, if there's, um, if there's no concerns, then, 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 then we, we don't, the city's not exposed to any, uh, potential liability, let's, let's, let's call it.
'Cause if we're at sixty inches, but above grade, it's gonna be seventy-two inches, you know, that's just...
On either side.
On either side.
Sixty from the viewer's side.
Yes.
Yeah, so the grade was established through the grading permit that was provided to build the, to construct the building. That, um, this project does not provide for an after-the-fact re-grading, uh, of, of this area. Everything that they're proposing here was part of a grading plan, what they're providing of, for review of now is just the, the monument sign that, that they had indicated on their grading plan would, would be there. Should it, should it not have been approved or not be approved, uh, the grade would still remain the same as it is now, so, um, so the grade that, we're basing this off of is what was established when they constructed the building.
By the way, the, the plan says that it's sixty-eight point four inches, not sixty inches. What are the, what are the intersection traffic controls at that intersection? Is it stop? Is it signalized?
It says signalized.
It's signalized.
Signalized, okay. Was the, um...
It's stop sign. Is it a stop sign? Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Always stop.
Yeah, you're right, it's right there, stop sign.
Sorry.
Um, was it analyzed to see, make sure that this is outside of like a site, site triangle issue?
Yes, yes, I, it went to, it went to, yes, it went to traffic.
Uh, Mr. Ponson reviews this.
Yes.
These types of applications as part of the development management team.
Okay. Um, Chair Pro Tem Camp, what were, what were the design things that you were hoping to see in it?
Well, I refinished it. I refinished it with her.
She said she was finished.
You may wanna open the public hearing at this point. You may want to open the public hearing at this point before getting into any deliberations or discussion.
Great idea, thank you. I'd now like to open the public hearing. Then there are members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none?
We'll close it.
We'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Adam. Commissioner Camp, what were you hoping to see in design review consideration?
This is a gateway to the city. Everybody that exits at Calafia is going to see this. We really like the building. Everybody knows that. I think it's a good example of Spanish colonial revival. I'm not opposed to the sign. I think it's, you know, it's appropriately sized for that location. I just think we have very few opportunities to create something unique at a gateway location. I think the choice of materials is fine, it's compatible with this style of architecture, but it's basically a flat sign that seems very two-dimensional that's just turned at an angle so that you'll see it. The building, if you could put that building photo back up on the monitor. The building has some proportional qualities that are not two-dimensional. They're very, it's enhanced, I think, with a lot of the massing and the forms of the building. I thought it would be great to take advantage of that location to consider not just a sign that identifies the location of this project, but that also says something about the quality of the architecture and as sort of an entrance, even it is on the south end certainly of the city, but such an important location, I would like to see something a little more unique. Am I going to oppose it? No, probably not. I mean, I just thought, and that's what I had requested, and I think my fellow commissioners agreed with me, that this is a great opportunity to do something unique. So, again, it's a suggestion. You know, we understand a lot of time and energy has gone into this. Would I love to see something that has a three-dimensional quality, and I'm not saying exactly what that is, but that relates to the corner, to the grade, to the building. And I'm just not seeing that in this sign. Again, I think it's very appropriate in terms of the use of materials, I think the size is fine, even though it's, what, more than double? What the, I guess, which is the reason we're looking at it. And again, if it was a different location where you weren't seeing it when you got off the freeway, I think I would probably think differently, but I would really love to see something a little bit more unique in terms of the shape and the location and even the way it sits on the ground. That's, that may be a little vague, but I know you're a good sign company, you have the ability to do that.
We did bring that back to the customer, and they just wanted to go back, go forward quickly. This was designed, not by us, but a high-end, I guess a design company that does high-end hotels, so...
Yeah, I wonder if they visited the site? I assume they did.
It's a San Clemente company.
Okay.
I guess they've been there.
I hope they read our guidelines. Yeah, again, it's, I'm not necessarily going to vote against it. I think I'd probably support it, but I just think we're missing a great opportunity at this location.
Can I just chime in on that?
Go ahead, I don't have to.
Well, no.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
You know, to me, that's more, what I think you're bringing up is good, and it's, for me, I process that through the lens of staff feedback, because applicants are following, you know, the policy. So if maybe it's an opportunity to upgrade our city gateway monument sign element of our policy to add some of those additional ideas. And also, because I was thinking too, especially at the south end of town, this has nothing to do with you. Identifying, it would be really ideal too if it identified like San Clemente somehow. That might be too much for an applicant, but I think that's more feedback for the staff to consider just maybe enhancing our policy so that when an applicant's looking at it before they even come to design review, the feedback they're going to get is sort of in line with policy. So it doesn't come as a, well, we just sunk all this cost into building this, and now we have to go back to the drawing board type thing. So, for whatever it's worth, Adam, if you guys take a look at that and you think, yeah, maybe we could update that to incorporate some of these ideas, that might be, for future use, would be maybe advantageous.
I believe that monument signs were part of the permit streamlining considerations, so I think there will be an opportunity to look at that. The design guidelines, however, when we're talking about the gateway locations of the city, it's really the design guidelines and the general plan policies that provide for the discretion for hearing bodies such as this to require a higher quality of architecture or more statement because of that specific and special location within the city. However, staff was always more than happy to look at opportunities for ways that we could, I don't want to say codify specific design standards, but ways that we could provide some policy documents to inform potential applicants the level of quality that the city's looking for.
Commissioner Candle, you're on the design review subcommittee.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the members who aren't that design review reviews these things based on design guidelines, and we give suggestions, we do not design it for the applicant. And we are able to give our personal impressions of signs and all, but we are still bound by the design guidelines that if they meet it, as Adam said, the quality is something we can address, but we aren't dictating to them what it has to be. So it's a fine line. And does this meet the guidelines? Yeah, and I agree very much with Commissioner Camp. Is it an A++ on design for the guidelines? Meh. Is it a B? Yeah. And that's passing. But, you know, if the applicants had reviewed anything else that you can comment on that you might think more addresses some of the concerns addressed at design review, it'd be great to hear.
If I can comment, my name's Mike Riley. I was at the design review subcommittee meeting and clearly heard Commissioner Camp's comments, and I remember the discussion about how we might make the sign more compelling, and, you know, we talked about things such as moving away from the symmetrical shape and doing some other things. So we certainly heard your comments and appreciated them, and you had a second comment as well, which was suggesting we come back to the design review subcommittee and share what we had looked at in terms of other options. What I can say is life's a compromise. We'd love to, we'd love to make unique and beautiful signs. When you're here next month, you'll see our sign behind you, which will be handcrafted and I think quite striking. In this case, the, our customer felt very much a sense of urgency in terms of the time that's elapsed. They were concerned about visibility of the building to emergency personnel, and I guess there was some difficulty or some inability to put some banners on the building to help market the property as well. I wasn't part of that, so I don't know, you know, the full story. So anyway, we were trying to work between the very good suggestions about how we might make the design more interesting and more compelling and our client's sense of urgency, and this is where we ended up.
Thank you.
If the other gateway locations along the freeway don't have anything special, if you look at Avenue de Vista Hermosa or Pico, there's, when you come off, there's really nothing. So to hoof this project with, well, you'd have Chick-fil-A, but it's not a Spanish, I mean, it doesn't have a saying, welcome to San Clemente sort of, you know, we may have some of that on El Camino Real, but I think it's unfair to harness this project, because most of, I usually frequently come off here, because one of my family members used to live in this area, and anytime I have anybody different in the car, what they look at is the building, go wow, you know, what's that? So I think to have a, there already is a quality of gateway-ishness because of its design, it's Spanish colonial, it's clean. I like the sign, and I'm ready to approve this resolution if you need a motion.
Please do.
Yeah, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I just think, just because, well, just because we have a certain look in other locations doesn't mean we want to keep ourselves down at that level.
But I don't know of any other project that we've done that we've tried to upgrade their sign because they're at a gateway kind of location. We didn't make...
Well, we probably don't have to debate this, but we...
And Chick-fil-A, we didn't do it, and...
Yeah, but we did recently look at a project right there at South El Camino Real, and we did make some suggestions about the sign, the project sign.
I think if you look historically at all the freeway off-ramps, there's no unified gateway signage program. I mean, it might be on paper, but there's nothing out there physically. I don't even know if on El Camino Real, if in the middle of the meeting, it says, welcome to San Clemente, a monument sign.
Well, in the end, I think it's, you know, their client was pleased with that sign, and that's the one they wanted to present, and I understand that.
Right. So I'd make a motion to adopt resolution PC 22033, and also the termination that it's category exempt from CEQA.
I for one, my comments are, I don't particularly like this sign, to be honest. I don't feel like it matches the building. I don't feel like it matches the architecture of the building. I don't think it looks very Spanish colonial revival to me. It would have been nice if the diagram coloring matched the coloring that you're presenting on the color board. I for one think this, I agree wholeheartedly that it's not on them necessarily to, while it is a gateway and it should be nice that we, it's not their problem to make a gateway sign for us, but I don't think it's compatible with the building. I think the building looks phenomenal. I think this sign does not, by comparison, nor does it compatible. So I will be voting against the project, I for one. With no other comments, we'll vote on the motion at hand. Anybody have other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, or no, or nay? Two opposed, so item passes four to two.
Who's the other no?
We have Camp and Ken are nos, and everybody else is an aye.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Moving on, item 8B, zoning amendment 22-395, urban lot split and two-unit projects, SB 9 ordinance. And I think we have a staff report from Sarah.
Perfect, thank you Chair and Commissioners, good evening. My name is Sarah Toma, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. Ooh, am I loud? Is that better? Today I'll be presenting to you zoning ordinance for urban lot splits and two-unit projects, that's also known as SB 9. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview of SB 9. It requires cities to allow certain lots in single-family residential zones to be split and allow certain lots in single-family residential zones to be developed with up to two dwellings. SB 9 requires cities to approve eligible lot splits and two-unit projects ministerially, which means no discretionary review conditions or a public hearing. And on December 7th of 2021, so last year, the City Council did adopt an urgency ordinance, 1723, to comply with, to comply and appropriately regulate projects under SB 9. Part of this effort that's coming before you has been to replace the urgency ordinance and adopt chapter, whoops, I apologize for that. Forgive me. There we go. Part of this effort is to replace the urgency ordinance and adopt chapters 1650, which is the urban lot splits, and the chapter 17.86, which is the two-unit projects to the San Clemente Municipal Code and to establish additional objective design standards. So an urban lot split, again, like I mentioned before, local agencies are required to approve them ministerially, and it's for parcel map for an urban lot split that meets SB 9 specific requirements. And the requirements are, but they're not limited to the MAP Act compliance, location in a single-family zone, lot configuration, it can't be historic, it can't be impacting any protected housing such as affordable housing, lot access, et cetera, there's a full list. And here's an illustration of potential lot configuration under the urban lot split. This is just four of many different ways a property owner that meets the requirements of SB 9 can split their lot. Far right on your screen, you can see for primary dwelling, which is an existing single-family, somebody can come in and just split it down half of their lot, and they can sell off the rest. And then I kind of put together just kind of various examples of what that could look like, as long as, they can do this as long as they do not exceed four units with, on that property. So they can have a combo of all primary dwelling, two primary dwelling ADUs, junior ADUs, it doesn't matter, as long as they don't exceed the four. For the two-unit project, again, it requires local cities to ministerially approve it, and as long as they meet the specific code requirements, and the two-unit project means development of two primary dwelling units, or if there isn't already a primary dwelling unit on the lot, the development of a second primary dwelling unit on a legally subdivided lot in accordance with the government code. And again, I provided an illustration of what that could potentially look like. This, it basically is no lot splitting, somebody can have one single-family, they can go through our building permits, normal process, submit for this, and they can have, again, a combo of primary dwelling, ADU, junior ADU, as long as they do not exceed four units. So the proposed ordinance is basically codifying the standards contained in the urgency ordinance and establishing additional objective design and development standards, as I stated before, such as lot coverage to match underlying zone, urban open area providing recreational space for new dwelling, we added some architecture and landscaping. And we did meet with the design review subcommittee twice, once on September 28th and October 26th, and we provided, they provided a lot of good feedback, and we revised the ordinance, and then they did provide their support to staff to add the additional objective design standards. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolution providing a... And staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolution, provided in attachment one, which one determines the project is exempt from CEQA, and two recommends that the City Council adopt an ordinance to amend chapter 1650, chapter 1786, to the, to the San Clemente Municipal Code, and to establish objective design, development, and subdivision standards regulating urban lot split and two-unit projects in accordance with SB 9. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Sarah?
I got one, or a couple. Sarah, can you pull up the graphic of the lot splits? And Steve, jump in here with me on this. Looking at that, the majority of our lots in the city are probably 45 to 50-foot wide. And I don't see that that kind of a lot split works on any of those lots. And so it's going to have to be unique, larger lots, which we have on the other side of the freeway, and maybe in some communities, there's some a little wider, but the houses are usually in the middle. My observation is, we don't have that many lots that this can actually be done on, and I'd take Steve's input on that, too. So it's not going to be a simple one. I don't see that it's going to be a financial advantage to anybody to split a valuable lot and have to take down their residence to put a couple of, four small little units and try to sell them. So I think the, one is, it may not be practical, and I don't see that we'll have an abundance of these. There may be a random one here or there. So I don't think there's any fear factor for me. This seems kind of like a, I don't know how to put it.
Well, if I--
Waste of time.
No. Staff does understand that concept. That we, in just analyzing this, it seems unlikely that a lot of properties are going to pencil out to make this work. However, one thing I will say is, this graphic is designed to show how units, new units, can appear on a currently single-family residentially zoned property. They don't have to be split in the middle. They need to be about 50/50, somewhere between 40 and 60%, the same size when it's done being split, but it could be a flag lot.
Could be.
Could be. The regulations are that there's a foot, at least a 14-foot wide path of travel for vehicular access on a flag lot. If that's the case, and you have a 45-foot wide lot, that still leaves, you know, about 31 feet or so left over on a lot that's 50, 70, 100 feet deep, and we do have those.
Oh, yeah, 100 is pretty much the standard.
Right. You start finding ways where you could potentially split this and build on it. The question, of course, remains, is it, does it pencil out? And I think for a lot of the properties here, it doesn't, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. Not to say that we don't anticipate seeing applications for this. We do think there are definitely some properties in town that may want to take advantage of it.
And the other thing I wanted to indicate was, these same pieces of property have the opportunity to do an ADU without the expense of a lot split and everything else. So we need to keep that in mind, and especially when we're discussing it. We spent a lot of time on it in the Design Review, going over the ordinance, and Sarah did a good job incorporating those comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say--
Oh, please.
Yeah, I agree with what Bart is mentioning, but there's also a couple other questions. If there's a development that has CCNRs, which restrict the, I guess, the development of that particular property, how does that impact this bill?
I got, I could jump in here. The CCNRs would be a private cause of action among the communities, so it would be, you know, someone on the board or an affected neighbor, landowner, that would sue to enforce those. So it's, you know, it's a private contract among the community, and so it would be handled at that level among the HOA and the residents.
So it doesn't apply necessarily?
State law doesn't apply within the--
If they, if they themselves contractually said you could not do it, then, then no. But if their HO, if their CCNRs were silent about it, then their CCNRs wouldn't be a barrier to it.
Well, the CCNRs wouldn't necessarily address this particular bill, so they're all going to be silent. So I'm not sure what you're suggesting.
Well, I mean, I do, I have heard of some communities amending their CCNRs in the state. But, yeah, I mean, it would be, I mean, this does apply statewide, and it does require cities to allow it in single-family residential zones. So it would be, for the CCNRs, it would be up to the community to determine within its CCNRs how it, how it does or does not address it.
Okay.
Why doesn't HOA have that discretion, but the city doesn't?
Because the HOA is a private community that people bought into and self-contract and vote on their CCNRs, and it's a private arrangement among private property owners.
How is that different from somebody buying a piece of property in the city of San Clemente when they know there's a municipal code that exists and the state hasn't passed Senate Bill 9, but yet they are affected? How is that property right affected, but the HOA property right is not affected? Because I think the state, it does apply, somebody up in Tulagak could split their lot if they wanted.
Yeah, I know.
If you really wanted to push it.
I think I'm agreeing with what you're saying. I think, yeah, so for ADUs, for a comparison, the state has specifically come in and passed a civil code section that says, hey, CCNRs, regardless of what you say, these are the rules for ADUs within HOAs. That has not happened within the context of SB 9. So that's the, so anyways, yeah, SB 9 does apply in those communities, but if a city, or rather, if a community itself decided to self-contract around it, that'd be an option for an HOA to consider, but--
To consider litigation.
Yeah, but the city itself, the city itself, the bill gives direction to the city, and the city has to follow what the mandate from Sacramento says at this time.
What's our minimum lot size? Is it like 50 by 100?
As a result of an urban lot split, or just the, within the city?
Like in the city of Downey, the minimum lot, if you're, you know, is 50 by 100. You can go up from there, but you can't go down from there. You can't split a 50 by 100.
For a single-family zone, is it 6,000?
Yes.
6,000 square feet.
And under, and under SB 9, so as staff said, the, it has to be, the most it can deviate from 50/50 is 60/40, and state law says that the smallest lot can be after the split is 1,200 square feet.
Well, my only comment is that SB 9 causes me to have an anaphylactic reaction. And, you know, at some point, somebody's going to sue the state, because this is like property rights and things that are set up to where if you buy something, all of a sudden your neighborhood can shift, because the state says that it can. You know, I don't really like to vote yes when I have a gun, you know, pointed at my temple. Well, I think we probably have to approve this, because there's penalties if we don't. But again, that's an avenue to bring about litigation, but we would probably also not lose, but we would hurt while we'd fight.
So Commissioners, and Commissioner McCacken, that's a great point that you're making. In the interest of informing the Commission about their options related to state laws, we already have an ordinance on the books, so we've already adopted a version of this. This version makes some small clarifications to what was adopted in the urgency ordinance, but adds a lot of other regulations, objective standards, that go beyond what the minimum is required by the state. Not so much that it's, that it, it does not comply with the poll, the state housing policies, but it, these standards, these objective standards specifically, are geared to reducing the potential impact of this type of development in a single-family zone. So if the, let's say the urgency ordinance never got adopted, and we were back at the beginning, if the city did not adopt something like this, the state would tell us, tell staff how we're supposed to do it. This gives us as much local control as we can possibly muster at this, at this time in what is an unfortunate situation of state regulations.
Yeah, can I just--
Please.
So I don't know if that was clear from what Sarah presented, but yeah, there's already an ordinance. And we spent some, you know, significant amount of time going through every aspect of that ordinance and looking at ways that we could, as you say, clarify, so that the impact would be significantly reduced. And we considered not just the sort of character of the ordinance, but also we looked at our city and to see which properties might be impacted. And as Commissioner Crandall mentioned, there are very, very few that would even, you know, get to that point, but the ones that could, I believe that, you know, we did a pretty good job of putting in here requirements that are going to make the kind of things that you're talking about not possible. And yeah, maybe you can find an exception--
I'm just saying that it is possible if you have a large company come in and say, take my lot, like up in Tulagak, and they buy it for $2 million, and they got the money to put in, you know, the split, and then they got four units that they're going to charge like $4,000, you know, to live in these four units. That's 20, that's 20 grand a month. That's 200,000, 200 and some odd thousand dollars a month, I mean, a year. You take 10 years, there's 10 million. It's, it really kind of depends on the rate of return, how soon they want their investment. But it's, there's no question that in 15 years, depending on the type of construction, what they put up, they could return, I mean, somebody like Berkshire Hathaway could turn around and do it. And unfortunately, that's who's doing a lot of the ADUs.
Sarah, could you--
So I'm just saying, I'm going to vote for it, but--
I wanted to, her, to address it while you're thinking of this item.
Yeah.
The owner, the lot owner requirements--
Yeah, I was gonna--
Would you review that real quick?
Yeah, Commissioner McCacken makes a good point. So I wanted to highlight part of the application requirements under, for 1650 under lot split, it says individual property owners means natural person holding a title individually. And then you go to under, does not include any corporations, LLCs, LP, CS corporations. So there is language in here that deters companies from coming in and taking over single-family lots and redeveloping. It's intended for property owners with a single-family lot that want to take, that wants the opportunity to create another dwelling, max four naturally. But that's kind of the restrictions that was allowed by state and that we were able to incorporate.
And can that one unit be rented out?
Yes.
Does our code say you actually have to live in that unit?
Yes, we incorporated language that says they have, the property owner, if they lot split and build another unit, they would have to live in the primary dwelling, as well as they can, they can rent it as long as it's 30 days or over, not short-term rentals.
They can long-term rent it, though.
Yes, they can long-term, correct.
I was going to say, yeah, the state law specifically says, as Sarah said, that these have to be used as long-term rentals, they can't be vacation rentals, they can't be short-term rentals. And then also, too, state law specifically prohibits, and the city's ordinance reflects the prohibition that if you say, I move, and I buy your lot, and then I buy the one next door, I can't lot split both of them. I mean, it looks at the owner, and they can't, they can't split an adjacent property, so I know that there's routinely sometimes legitimate concerns about, you know, just suddenly a domino effect. And there are some limits that state law allows the city to impose, which this ordinance does about prohibiting an owner of adjacent lots from splitting both of them.
Sarah, I have a few, does anybody else have questions? I have a few.
And Commissioner, Chair McCann, just one thing, just remember, we haven't opened a public hearing--
Yeah, I--
At some point before we get--
Thank you, yeah. I consider we're still in the question-asking staff phase, and then we'll--
Yeah.
--open the public hearing. I have a few questions. On the front setbacks, it says front setbacks shall be 30 feet. Shouldn't it, shouldn't the setback match whatever the zone, the setback of that zone is? I kind of thought we had talked about that, and--
So for, we did talk about it during the DRC meeting, and I think the, what I understood was that we wanted, for urban lots, but we wanted to create enough distance that it wouldn't hinder any development, as well as making sure that it conforms architecturally with what's around it.
So--
There's also an intensity issue here on a lot that used to have one primary dwelling allowing for, one, what we would call a single housekeeping unit, to now have two in a single-family zone is going to create twice the potential intensity at, you know, from the street. And so an additional setback, which is allowed by state law, would mitigate what would be the increase of having one, one, one single-family unit at 20 feet away from the front property line to now having two from the same distance. Since there's now two that could be right, right there, pulling that back, actually, potentially, there could be four, if you actually look at this right. So to have an additional setback just simply creates a little less, I'll call it, stress on the street--
Okay. Little more articulation.
Yeah.
Okay, so should, because I noticed that in the SB 9, it says 30 feet, and on the two-unit, it says 25 feet. Is that intended?
No, that was not intended. That is an error.
It should both be 30.
30, yes. Staff will correct that.
Okay.
Yeah, nice catch. Thank you.
On the landscaping and tree removal, one thing that was talked about is replacing mature trees that are lost. I think we need to add a word combined in section--
C.
K1C. Page nine of 29 on the, of the ordinance.
Staff looked at that earlier today, and I think we agree with, with that. We're talking about a replacement of trees that match the diameter of the tree that is being removed, so that you can replace one large mature tree with a number of smaller trees that together would have the same diameter--
Okay.
Rather than having people replace one large mature tree with another possibly very expensive, large, mature--
Or possibly obtained. So, okay, so I think we can, I think that can get solved by adding the word combined in front of trunk, with a combined trunk diameter that is the same or larger of the removed tree.
In my memory, from the Design Review Subcommittee, I believe that's what we actually discussed at that time.
Right. So do we want to add the word combined here?
Yes, we will, yes, we will add that language.
Will that happen moving forward, too?
Yes, so basically, when we go to council, I'll revise it with you guys' comments and make the revisions, and then once, if they adopt it, then it'll be included.
I'm talking more about all further lot splits. We'll have that language?
Yes.
So you don't have to catch that every single time?
Yes, absolutely.
Under, on page 11, under Utilities, Section S, it talks about each primary dwelling unit on a lot must have its own direct utility connection to a service, utility service provider. And I had kind of questioned that. I think it's up for discussion, see what the Commission thinks. For example, if someone has a triplex or a fourplex, they don't have four sewer lines running out to the main that it joins, and they have one sewer lateral. Because if, the way this is written, and someone builds a bunch of units on, you're going to have, you know, four street cuts for sewer, four street cuts-- to have, you know, four street cuts for sewer, four street cuts for water. I mean, it's going to, kind of really cut up the street, which then becomes a maintenance issue. And my suggestion would be that we'll just maybe take that, that whole sentence out. I, I don't think that's necessary, but.
Well, if it's a lot split, it should have its own separate utility connection.
One per, it'll only be two units max on a lot.
One per, okay, um, one per, each prim, it says each primary dwelling on, on a lot. Maybe we should say each lot must have its own direct utility connection rather than each primary dwelling unit.
That's probably clearer, yeah.
Okay, I see a bunch of shaking, nodding heads up.
Okay, just to.
Primary water and sewer, these others are going to probably be needed separately.
Yeah, they're separately needed, yeah.
Okay, so just to confirm, for the lot split under Title 1650, we want to remove the, each primary dwelling unit to have its own utility.
I think we, I think we say, just take out the word primary dwelling unit on the. So it'll say each lot must have its own direct utility connection.
Got it, okay.
Instead of each unit, it just drops to each lot.
And to clarify, Chair, you're looking at S, little i?
S, little i, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess my comments would be, would, rather than try and, would reflect in that two-unit as well, because the language is basically the same.
Right.
So like if we're adding the word combined on the tree diameters, and if we're taking out this here, that would also reflect in the two-unit language.
Yes, that is correct.
And then, I think this is my last comment, yeah. On, on fire hazard mitigation measures, so it's number 12A, little i. It says, so this is if a lot is in a, a very high fire zone, which I looked at the maps and that, a lot of the city is. You'd be surprised at what is, which you don't think it is, it is. Says must have direct access to a public right-of-way with a paved street with a width of at least 40 feet. That 40 feet is, there's probably very, very few, if any, residential streets in the city that have 40 feet wide. I, I went out and measured mine. My street is 25 foot wide curb to curb. I measured a couple others near me, one, another one's 25, one's 22 curb to curb. This just seems kind of punitive because it doesn't seem to me like the restrictions for these things should be tougher than if someone was to build a residential, just a straight-up single-family home on a lot. You know, it ought to have kind of generically the same conditions. Not, then you would say, okay, well, you can't build a house on, I, I just think that's unnecessary. I looked up OCFA because it was maybe mentioned that, well, that came from OCFA.
That's from 25.
Yeah, well, actually, it says, in their development, it says 20. 20, they want 20-foot, 20-foot width, or a one-way road has to be 12 feet wide. So they were, they had things about the weight, it would need to support certain weight. But anyway, I, I would suggest that that should be 20, like what I see in OCFA. I don't know if there's any other support on the commissioner.
What about if we just, what about if we just pointed to the OCFA requirements? Because there's a lot of radius turns.
Turnaround, so.
Yeah, and the weight and all that.
Is there a question for staff though?
Are we in a high fire?
So.
Well, I guess I, that's, that's a great, that's a great point, that's a great point. Okay, let me change it to a question. Where did 40 feet come from?
I believe 40 feet came from when the urgency ordinance was put together and that was the language that was provided. If the commissioners would like to change that or maybe have staff check with OCFA and see what their requirements are.
So I, I'm, I'm sorry, all of these standards were reviewed by OCFA. OCFA cleared all of these. They may have different guidelines, but those guidelines are not for urban lot splits. These guidelines are for urban lot splits. And so when we're talking about increasing the density of existing development, development that was already reviewed by OCFA once, especially in the very high fire severity zone, and now we're talking about increasing density, and when they reviewed this with, with us, this is what they were, they were good with.
Where in our city is there very high fire hazard severity zones?
Um, it's going to be most of the area west, east of the five freeway.
Talaga's huge.
Talaga is definitely most, a lot of Ranch of San Clemente, a lot of, a lot of Forester Ranch is, is within it.
South of, south of Pico, east of the freeway.
And we're sure that there's a zone map that says that? Because my fire insurance here is less than it was in Downey.
Depending on where you, where you, where you live.
Because I'm not sure that we're totally.
In some, in some areas of the city.
We're not next to a national forest, we're next to grassland.
Well, I live in a high fire zone and mine, I got, I had to go really far and wide to even get insurance in Talaga.
I'm in Talaga.
Yeah.
Didn't have any problem.
Yeah, well, you could be closer, closer to the, Mr. Melissa maybe.
Now they're going to get me.
Okay, I guess.
And then just one thing, everybody could just confirm that their mics are on when they're speaking.
Okay, I get, maybe we should open the public hearing?
I have another question.
Okay, question.
I have another question. So does that mean in, they have to have a 40-foot wide split to, wide street in order to do a lot split? You will deny their application if they're in a fire hazard zone and the street is not 40 feet wide?
That's correct.
Yeah, this, it's a, it's a ministerial requirement and they, and the box is either checked or it's not if you're in a very high fire hazard severity zone.
And, and this, just curious, somebody checks and makes sure there's no mortgage interest on every property that's applying?
Yes, so part of, correct, so part of the application process, as Ryan stated, that it will be basically like a checklist saying that, and they would have to also sign various affidavits stating that what information they provided the city is accurate and true.
And Commissioner, under, I think exactly what you're saying, on page, it's C1B on the first page of lot split, there's a requirement that any person with a mortgage interest in the lot to be split signs an application indicating they consent to the project. So if the bank says no or whoever holds the mortgage isn't on board with the lot split, then that's, that's a basis to deny.
Okay, I, let's open the public hearing. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Chair, I did have one clarification for the, for the commission. I know there was discussion of, of strikeout when we're speaking to the utilities.
Right.
And so if we go to the two-unit project ordinance, I'm looking at page 25 of the clean version, it would be little T, little i. So if we strike primary dwelling unit on the lot, within the context of a two-unit project, that could cause confusion because someone might do a two-unit project but not a lot split. And so referring, saying each lot presupposes that someone would be doing a lot split and they may or may not be. So that.
Okay.
So if the, I guess, if you wanted, I'm trying to, you know, also think out loud here on, on the fly, that that could cause confusion if there's only one lot and someone's just adding a second unit.
Well, I think we, my opinion is we could just strike that section I completely because they're on the, if we're saying that, okay, the two units on one lot could share sewer and water, for example.
For this section, I really think that the intent here is that every unit has basically direct metering and direct control, shut off, shut off valves, et cetera, for their utility connections rather than providing for like, let's say, a primary dwelling with a junior ADU within it and that junior ADU does not have its own electric panel. But it's, it's operating off of a sub-panel on the main house.
Might also mean for sewer, that instead of going to the sewer under the house, it's got to connect directly to a sewer line that goes straight out to the street. Because that's what the two people that, doing ADUs, the most convenient would have been to go right to the house to connect to the sewer, you know, to the house. But they had to go out and find a straight shot and then they could hit and hook into the lateral, but they couldn't go to the house. So that's a direct connection to the sewer, even though you're sharing that direct line.
Well, another thing to consider is SB 9 can be used for a lot split, a two-unit project or, or two two-unit projects, or either or. And what that could create, since once you, once you use SB 9, you're locked into SB 9. You can't continually add on to the resulting homes. It, it's going to, you're going to be locked into basically two 800-square-foot primary dwelling units on, on each of the resulting lots. But you could do the two-unit projects and then come in later and do an urban lot split. And keeping language like this in here is going to ensure that the urban lot split, it, that we're not, there aren't like utilities just kind of willy-nilly all over the place and then somebody comes in and wants to split the lot and now it's like, oh, well, no, now you need, now you need to clean up all these utilities that we allowed you to do as part of a two-unit project, but now don't work with, with a lot split. Because we want all the utilities on each specific lot.
I guess.
I think what you're.
I guess I understand exactly what you're saying, because I think it, it, like, I just don't see the need to put four sewer laterals out to a main and cut up the street four times, you know, when, if you had a fourplex, there'd be one sewer lateral. I certainly understand separate metering.
And I understand, you know, having, having one street connection and, and having things branch, you know, off of that one connection. But I, I think what we're talking about is like on this example here on the far left, if, if, if they didn't do an urban lot split first and they just did the two, the two-unit projects, they could come up with four dwelling units. They would have, they, in this case, there would be two primary dwellings and two ADUs. But if all of the utilities in this scenario end up going to the street from the unit that's at the very bottom left, meaning that the top units, utilities would be coming south.
I'm sorry, where's the street in your scenario? Is it at the top or is it the left edge?
So what I'm saying is, if these, if there's no lot split.
Where's the street?
Street's here.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking it was at the top.
Utilities for these two and this come to here and then out here. Then they come back and go, now we want to do an urban lot split? That's going to be a nightmare. But if we tell everybody originally, all your utilities need to go directly to the street, we would avoid that situation in the future. Now, your, your, your option here of just having the utilities on each lot go to the street would essentially bar somebody from, from doing that, but that's a consideration if we want to allow that to occur easily.
Is there, Adam, I don't know how this would work. If somebody wanted to condo map those two units on that one lot?
You're not allowed to.
Well, I don't know that, that's what I'm asking.
There is language, there is language in there that talks about no.
If they did an airspace condo?
There's no, that, that's, yeah, Commissioner Crandall, that's not allowed within the ordinance that we already have on the books.
Don't allow that.
Right.
Yeah, I.
It's not allowed.
There is some language, I do remember that, has come up.
Condo maps are through city council, I believe.
We, a couple of years ago, put them down to the zoning administrator level.
This is an argument for separate sewers.
Mm-hmm.
For each unit. If they wanted to condo map them in sometime in the future, that's allowed.
Commissioner, to your, to your, to your question, and Sarah reminded me, on page 13 of the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
13A, little I, I, yeah, condo map, airspace divisions and common interest developments aren't permitted on a lot that's created from or to lot split.
Great, okay.
So that's not a scenario that would be permitted.
So to answer your question, Chair McCann, staff would be fine with how you're proposing this language be changed for as long as our legal counsel, Mr. Stager, is comfortable with page 25 and how that, how each primary dwelling unit on the lot must have its own direct utility connection to the utility service provider is addressed or clarified to be consistent with the urban lot split version.
So with the, with urban lot split, it sounded like we were saying each lot has to have its own connection after the split.
Right, so if someone splits, then there'd be two connections at a minimum.
Yeah, so then with two-unit projects on TI on page 25, where, what's, what's the latest proposal for that? I'm conceptually trying to keep that organized.
I believe it's striking that whole section was the last proposal.
Because we're, I guess we're saying if the two, someone did a two-unit project on one lot.
Mm-hmm.
They could share the utilities connection, in which case I don't see that we need that Roman numeral I at all for the two, in the two-unit condition.
Yeah, I mean, SB 9 doesn't, like if you control F for the word utility in SB 9, it's not there. So there, there is, are the city's requirements, if any, on that front just need to be objective. So I would just say if we, if the commission wants to suggest striking I, you know, we make sure that, you know, the rest of the, you know, there are any dominos in effect with whether or not that impacts, you know, two, three, four, five and six. So I want to take a moment to just make sure that we weren't leaving a hole somewhere here.
Well, the hole, the hole would be in numeral two, which talks about if, that it could have its own onsite wastewater treatment plant or wastewater system or septic basically, which, do we have any septics in town?
Just removing the notwithstanding.
The reference.
Yeah, you could take out I and then strike the first, like everything before the comma on Romanet two and then just start that with A.
That makes sense to me. As an aside, do we have any septic tanks in town? Do we know?
I don't believe, I don't, I don't believe that we do. There may be some very old ones, but yeah, that has not come up very often and we do not, we do not allow them now, nor have we allowed them for, I think, a substantial amount of time, so long that there wouldn't be any surviving.
Yeah, it's funny that it's even in here.
I thought it was prohibited. Didn't we talk about that, did I review that they're prohibited?
Well, but it's, it's, it's in here as being allowed. Well, but it would be subject to the city code, I think. It's just saying that if you are on septic, you have to have one per unit.
Yeah, you only get it in accordance with, and the city's codes. If the code doesn't allow it, like a new, a new establishment of that.
Went through that at the design review and I was, thought you told me that's not, that can't happen. They can't drop a septic tank in and make that their sewer utility.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
If the city doesn't allow it, the city doesn't allow it.
Yeah.
Okay, so where did we end up on, how does the commission feel about this OCFA 40-feet, 20-feet thing?
I think it's fine with me if they've already, if OCFA's already looked at it. If we want to be, if we want to open it up, I think we, we shouldn't be specifying widths of streets, we should, we should refer to the OCFA standards, which would include all of them if we're going to make a change.
Aye.
I don't think a change is necessary.
Well, I think if you, I mean, I don't know how the 40 feet came about. If someone went to OCFA and said, hey, are you fine with 40 feet? And they said, yeah, cool, well, of course, the firemen, they'd prefer wider, better.
Well, what he said is that it was already in the emergency ordinance, the 40 feet.
Yeah, it looks like less than, less than 20% of the city is even in the high-fire zone. Most of the city's not, nothing on, but a lot of it is nothing.
A lot of it's not built.
Yeah. But some is, just the high, very high parts of the layout.
Well, my opinion is it shouldn't be, 40 feet is excessively wide. It's wider than it would be if, like, they wouldn't, not let a house get built on a lot. Probably zero residential streets that are 40 feet wide in the city. So basically, you're saying they can't do it in a high-fire area. That'd be my suggestion, but I'm done with my questions and comments.
On that subject, I think Adam brought up, because the impact of just the occupancy is why, is, did OCFA ask for the 40 feet, or how'd that 40 feet even come around?
It's probably with the two fire trucks. So that you wouldn't have one fire truck get stuck behind the other.
So this ordinance was initially reviewed by our development management team, and OCFA has a representative on that internal review, review team. So when, in our discussions with them, they had already worked with other cities on these types of regulations. What was proposed here was consistent with, or what was, what is proposed here, and what is already codified, is consistent with some of the direction that they have provided to other cities. Who actually came up with the draft language? I, I, I don't, I'm not aware.
I just want to support what you're saying. For design review, I went, this is all news to me. So I Googled this, and I went to about a dozen other cities, and it's like the same.
That's because they all use BBK. BBK writes one model ordinance, and then they give it to every one of their cities.
The point is, though, I thought it's kind of a collaborative thing in the sense that they're trying to cover all bases. And to some degree, it's trying to provide more protection for the city than someone trying to split a lot. That's what this is, is more in favor of the city. So I, when I saw the situations, I, my inclination was leave it, because that's the only line of defense we have. So I thought, let's use it.
I understand, I personally, and I'm not, and I'm not, I'm going to drop it, but I'm just saying, I understand all that logic, but it doesn't seem like, it seems like it needs to be somewhat reasonable. But I'll drop it.
I would say that Commissioner McCacken makes a good point, that if it's a high-fire hazard area, oftentimes, you do need to have, you have one apparatus that's fighting a fire in emergency, another one needs to get passed.
Right.
So in that case, 40 feet would be the minimum.
With cars on the street, yeah.
And if there's cars parked on it that they can't move.
If it's a high-fire hazard area, so I think we should.
They either got to take a tractor, LAPD is done up in Hollywood Hills, just crunch the car to do it out of the way so that they can go up. They'll get a cat up there.
Any more discussion on this, or should we take a motion?
Are we in discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, did we close the public hearing?
You did. You should say it again.
I closed the public hearing.
And then.
Open discussion. And I'd love to hear what Commissioner Crandall has to say.
You know, this is one of those ones, I think, at design review, we spent a lot of time on verbiage and whatnot with Sarah, and I think that was all painted up. And BBK, I have a hard time making some of the findings, but I know I'm bound to make them. So I'm going to say, if I was to approve this, it's going to be under protest or whatever. I don't know. Since we're only giving a recommendation that holds no water, but I have one other thing that, for everybody to think about when we get to health, safety, and welfare. This whole concept of taking lots that are built for families, and butchering them to make them 800-square-foot units for single individuals or a couple that aren't worth a darn for raising a family in, I think that's hurting the whole fabric and health, safety, and welfare of those neighborhoods.
Excellent point.
And it really bothers me that it's a, this whole thing by the state of taking over and thinking density, density, density is the cure-all to all problems. It causes other problems that it could chase out the families out of some of these neighborhoods that were founded and based on families. So can I make that finding? I have to, but that's also under protest that, and only because I'm being forced to do it. So the recommendation that I would hope the council looks at is, we're not doing this because we think it's appropriate. I think we've done the best we can with it. But I think there's some grounds that the FIBI and K can look at for health, safety, and welfare, whether we can make those findings that this is good planning, and the state's known for doing planning that is less than perfect. So that's my position on this thing, and for what it's worth, we got to do it, because I'd hate to see our housing element, probably even our coastal program, at risk by not doing this, because that's the leverage the state has over us. They're going to pound us over the head with it.
And just to clarify on that point, it actually wouldn't put us in jeopardy.
Wouldn't it?
No. And the reason it wouldn't is because the state's requiring us to do these actions, but under the state's guidelines and the state regulations of SB nine, it would be much easier to do these urban lot splits and these two-unit projects. What this ordinance does is it tightens up the state's regulations to try, to try to maintain as much public safety, health and safety as possible.
They don't like what we did, they have no recourse?
Well, so I think, I think what, a couple of things are being said here. I mean, yeah, if, if, if the, yes, if the state had issues with any jurisdictions, SB nine ordinance, I believe the AG has been active in some communities up in the Bay Area with, with sharing their displeasure and telling them what they thought wasn't compliant with the law. So I mean, there certainly are state agencies that are monitoring what cities are doing. But I think to the broader point, you know, SB nine says, you know, we have this statute, and then it gives cities an on-ramp, and some, puts up the bumpers, but it gives the cities some lane to bowl in, if you will. And by not, by not having a local ordinance that, you know, implements SB nine in the manner that the city wants to do, if you're just going by the statute, I mean, it's a couple pages, and it, you know, doesn't have height limits, it doesn't have setback limits. And so this is, you know, implementing the law in the way that state law allows cities to do so, where they want to exercise local discretion. So it's, it's playing within the yard that state law lets us still play in, if you will.
Yeah, I just want to reinforce, you know, because we went through this at the last meeting, too, with a similar thing. And so when this came before design review, and I did my homework, and I compared this to our emergency ordinance to this. This is so much better.
Oh, yeah.
We need to adopt it. What I would do, because I think Commissioner Crandall's point about public safety and welfare is a good one, but this might be a reach, but I think we bifurcate it. We do, we approve this, and if the staff, if the commission agrees, and if the staff agrees, we should send a memorandum to the council stating that we have a position that these state laws are, in fact, detrimental to our health, safety, and welfare, and that the objectives of the state are somewhat at odds for our community standards, and that we implore the city to work with the California League of Cities to make our opinion known. And we can, the points that Commissioner Crandall made, I think, are excellent. And we, if you guys could memorialize that, then the council would have a separate recommendation from us to consider directing staff, yes, let's direct BBK and our city manager to go to the California League of Cities with, to get them to represent the whole group of us that feel the same way, and push that at that level, with the specific, with this idea that it is in violation of our own community standards, and does jeopardize our community's health, safety. And I think we bifurcate it. And in that way, we make our statement, our objections and our concerns known with some actual findings that are, we could have, that could have some kind of legal standing and effectiveness at, with the California League. And approve this tonight, because it just dramatically improves our position, especially where SB nine is silent, and we now have teeth to push back. So we need to do that. So those are my, that's my feeling on it.
So not knowing who will make a motion, and I will say, before a motion is made, we would just like to clarify all of the changes that we've discussed here tonight. But if a motion is made with a memorandum of that type, there's a couple ways we can do that. We could simply provide that direct, that request from the planning commission as part of the recommendation to council in the staff report. We could draft up a memorandum on behalf of the planning commission. Those types of communications are typically provided by the chair to the, to the council, but we could possibly do something during like the reports of councils and, or council committees and commissions at a city, at the city council meeting. And that would be something that we could draft up and have Chairman McCann present on behalf of the, of the committee, or we could just add a memorandum to the staff report recommending, with the, with the planning commission's recommendation to the city council, talking about the need to work with the California League of Cities on this issue. So whatever the motion is.
It could be, it could be as simple or as involved as we wanted. I mean, if the, if the commission wants to recommend approval of the ordinance with the changes that we've specified on the record, and then also encourage the city council to pursue, you know, advocacy opportunities, to, you know, work with other statewide or regional cities to, you know, explore legislative changes, or, different, different ways we could do it, if you wanted to, you know, simplify it.
Adam, you've given a couple options, which would you recommend?
I would recommend that a memorandum summarizing these, these recommendations for, I'll call it legislative follow-up, be included with the staff report and the planning commission's recommendation to the city council. So it's a standalone document, but it accompanies the topic at hand, which is SB nine.
And would you draft that, or would I draft that?
Staff will draft that, and then if there's, if this is part of the motion, I could have the chair review it, since his name is on it, if that works. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Who else has discussion points? Mr. Cosgrove?
Yes, sir.
More, more to discuss?
No, no, I'm done, thank you.
Mr. McCacken? Dr. McCacken?
Can I, before we make a motion, clarify the changes that staff's noted down, that the commission's wanting to see in the text of this?
Sure.
I'll go quick here. So for two-unit projects, the front setback would be 30 feet. For replacement plants within the landscaping standards on both two-unit projects or urban lot splits, we want the trunk diameter, we want people to allow them to be combined, right? And then with the utilities, for urban lot splits, commission recommends that just saying each lot must have its own direct utility connection. And then within two-unit projects, we would strike little Roman at TI, and then everything before the first comma and TII.
That sounds right. I guess I do have one question, real quick, for clarification.
Yeah.
Adam, you mentioned, like, the 30 feet is good, maybe kind of like give some articulation on the, on the street scene? So if, if the, on the two-unit, if they're both back at 30, is that what you want, just to both push back, or do you want one at the code and one at the further back?
That limitation would require all, all units to be 30 feet back.
Okay. Yeah, okay. By the way, for discussion purposes, I wholeheartedly agree with all of the points raised by my fellow commissioners. I think you've raised some excellent points. And I'll entertain a motion.
Adam, was that last time, was that SB two that we just, we were going through that with all the other standards that we had to change, and we had two people object to it? Was that SB two, or was it also nine?
I'm trying to tie it all together in that bifurcated recommendation memorandum.
Commissioner Cosgrove, are you talking about our last commission meeting?
Yes.
That was for the housing element, to implement various state, housing state laws.
Housing state laws, okay. Okay, so I will move staff recommend, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Staff recommendations, one, determine that the project is exempt from CEQA. Two, recommend that the city council approve an ordinance to amend the chapter 16.50 state-mandated subdivisions, and chapter 17.86 state-mandated residential projects, which I guess is encapsulated in resolution of the planning commission 22-032. I would add to that, this motion, that we, as a planning commission, point number three, request staff to draft a memorandum for the city council from the chair of the planning commission, expressing our concerns about state law overreach on our, impacting our general plan in a way that puts our public health and safety and welfare at risk with pushing high-density residential state housing laws. And that the chair review that letter, or memorandum prior to it being submitted to the council.
And do you also, is your motion also include the modifications as discussed this evening?
Absolutely, yes, with respect, yes, the ones that were outlined by our, yes, the three, the setback, the three combining, and the other item. And that would be my motion, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0, begrudgingly. By the way, great job, Sarah.
Just so you guys know, when I was doing my search, I created, I don't even know how many pages that document was, where I was cutting and pasting different things, and I gave it to her, and she went through it all and said, you know what, we got this one, we got this one, oh, we don't have this one. It was great. She did a very thorough job.
She did.
And it was lots of pages that I gave her.
It was a gigantic effort.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Well done.
Okay, new business, no new business, old business, no old business. Reports of commissioners and staff. Any staff reports, or anything that the commissioners want to bring up?
Staff has no, no reports this, this meeting.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the planning commission to be held Wednesday, December 7, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Close of meeting.